Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the League of Women Voters Brown County Virtual Candidate Forum for Nashville Town Council. I'm Sherri Frank, President of the Brown County League. As you know, the league is nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose political candidates or political parties. We provide voters with candidate information such as what's published in the Democrat Newspaper, the online voter guide vote411.org, and candidate forums like this one to encourage you to vote and to help people be informed voters. We want to thank the candidates for joining us tonight and for all of you for participating. Our forum co-sponsors are the Brown County League, Brown County Chamber of Commerce, and Hoosier Action. A few business items. Candidates are asked to mute until speaking. Participants are asked to mute and turn off video. We will be recording. We are recording this forum. The, please afterwards, you can check the League of Women Voters Brown County LWVbrowncounty.org website for links to recordings and to see upcoming forums. Tonight, you'll see live captions are provided. The forum is planned for 90 minutes. We have a set number of questions planned. If there is time, we will ask for participant questions. Please go ahead and put your question in chat. They will be asked by a question moderator. Chat is right now limited to go to co-hosts and hosts. Right now, I would like to introduce our forum moderator Madison Miller. Madison spent 10 years working in state government and politics before moving to Brown County to become CEO of a local nonprofit. She is a member of the Brown County League of Women Voters, an active Rotarian. And tonight, where's the head of a member of the Brown County Board Member of the Brown County Chamber of Commerce and a co-sponsor of tonight's event? Thank you, Madison, for moderating this forum.
Thank you, Sherri. It's my pleasure to be here. Tonight's candidates in attendance for Nashville Town Council are Anna Hofstadter and Andy Wilson. Candidates not in attendance this evening include Melissa K. Parker and David Rudd. It's important to note that all candidates on the ballot for the Nashville Town Council race were invited to participate in tonight's forum. And per standing league forum rules, candidates not in attendance are invited to send a proxy to read a prepared introductory statement. One candidate Nancy Crocker provided a statement in advance, which I will read now. "I had planned to be on the Zoom tonight, but I need to be with my family. My sister finished her fight with cancer this morning, so I am with my family today. I have answered the five leak questions, and I hope from my history on the council that you know I am devoted to providing a safe, comfortable place for the residents of this small town to live." The questions Miss Crocker cites are currently available on vote411.org and in the Brown County Democrats 2022 General Election Voter Guide, along with all candidates that responded. Again, that's the September 28th edition of the local newspaper. This Hofstadter and Miss Wilson have been briefed on the rules for this evening. Each candidate will be asked to give a one-minute opening statement, then we will move to a series of questions where candidates will have two minutes to provide their responses. When there are 10 seconds remaining in a candidate's response, our timekeeper Pam Rader will hold up a yellow card and a red card will be presented when time has expired, at which point I may step in and ask the candidates to wrap up their response. The order of the questions will rotate so that one candidate is not always the first to answer questions. And near the end, like Sherri said, if time permits, we will ask for participant questions, and we encourage people to type those in the chat now. Lastly, we will conclude our round of questioning with each candidate giving a one-minute closing statement. So let us begin with opening statements. Ms. Hofstadter, you have one minute for an opening statement. Please begin.
Great. Thank you so much. So I would first of all like to thank my fellow candidates, the League of Women Voters, and most importantly, the audience for being here tonight. I am Anna Hofstadter, and I look forward to representing Nashville for a second term as Town Councilor. I'm a mother, a homeowner, and a swim coach who understands the needs of the regular, hard-working local people like you and like me. By the end of this forum, my goal is to prove to you that it will bring me the highest honor to represent you for a second term. A little bit about me, I was born here in Indiana, and I had the unique benefit of growing up across the country. I went to school with my mother in Seattle, Washington, and spent my summers in Brown County here with my father. After college, I officially moved to Brown County and fell in love. I began participating in local government at just about eight years old. I licked envelopes and made phone calls for Patty Murray's Congressional Campaign. I really admired Patty Murray's defiance in the face of adversity and her indefatigable optimism. One of my favorite quotes from Senator Patty Murray is, "If someone tells you that you can't make a difference, it's because they're afraid that you will." "The tangible sense of civic involvement ignited a lust for civic participation within me that remains burning to this day." A couple of additional honors. And credit, I'm sorry. Okay, in conclusion, I am grateful, and I look forward to the challenges and opportunities that the 2023-2027 term will bring.
Ms. Wilson, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and thank you for having me on this. This, my name is Andy Wilson, and if elected, this would be my first time on the town council. My family and I moved here about six years ago, and since we've been here, I've been employed locally at some restaurants, and I also work full-time at IU. In town, I sit on four commissions, the Arts Entertainment Development Review, Parking Facilities, and Beverages, and the redevelopment. And I'm also a committee member for some seats on the Brown County Community Foundation. I am also an associate member on the Brown County Volunteer Fire Department. I have a heart for this town, and I've noticed that since being a part of this town, I had a greater desire to seek a seat on the Nashville Town Council, mostly because I care about the future of the town and what happens with that future and how it's going to affect the current residents and then the future residents. I think Brown County is probably one of the most beautiful places in Indiana and even surrounding states, and is probably also one of the most promising places to live. I believe in a structured council with a comprehensive plan, and I want to do my part to help the council be successful for the residents.
Okay, let's move into the question portion of this evening, starting with Ms. Hofstadter. Are there infrastructure projects for the town of Nashville that you would support, and if so, why?
Absolutely. I definitely would support improving our water infrastructure. Right now, we are losing about 40% of our water just from faulty infrastructure. And water rates are very high in a large part because of this reason. I'm going to use an analogy of like a home. If your roof is leaking, then you replace the roof, right? Or anyway, so I just feel like we need to take care of certain priorities within our town, and that starts with with the infrastructure that might not be super sexy, but like a sexy project to do. But it's really important and has long-term lasting effects.
Ms. Wilson, same question. Are there infrastructure projects for the town of Nashville that you would support, and if so, why?
Yeah, I do agree with Anna that the water is definitely an issue here. It's something that obviously has to be addressed and is a concern for a lot of people. And because we're losing so much water because of the pipes and how well they are, something absolutely has to be done. But I think we need to have a plan set forth in order to make sure that we're making the best plan for town and not just jumping to conclusions on on quick fixes. I think that we need to bring in some professionals to help with giving us some of that information that maybe we don't, are not pretty to. And along with the water, we need to work on the roads. The roads are definitely getting a lot better. I've noticed some improvement since we've, since it's been getting a little bit cooler, but they need to continue to work on the roads. And I know that some of that is because of budgeting, and I would like to see how we can help fix that budgeting to make more of a plan to help improve those roads and the water from this point on.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, the next question goes to you first. Are there market forces that you think the town can address to improve homeownership opportunities for a variety of income levels?
I do think there are. I'm not 100% sure what they would all be, but I would really like to be a part of finding that out. I know that, living here, the housing market is a little bit tougher in Brown County. We were fortunate to come into the house at the time that we did when we moved here. But after talking with a lot of people, I know that renting here and buying housing here is is very expensive, and that can push people away. And so I think that we need to find ways to try to become more marketable to people who want to come here and live. And that could be improving current housing or finding different places where we can build in and around even the county. But, you know, mostly the town, there's, there's a lot of places to go. We just, we have to get creative.
Ms. Hofstadter, same question. Are there market forces that you think the town can address to improve homeownership opportunities for a variety of income levels?
Absolutely. I totally agree with with Ms. Wilson. I, I'm completely open to exploring also a variety of different scenarios, including like Section 8, maybe even like rent control. I think that it's important to evaluate every option so that we come up with with a good, solid plan. In terms of market forces, yeah, I would like to investigate the incentives that we can provide for for property owners to provide affordable housing for a variety of income levels. So yeah, to incentivize property owners and and protect and protect the people, the residents as well.
Okay, and as a follow-up question to that, Ms. Hofstadter, how do you think local government partners with lenders and land developers and builders to attract investment in housing?
Sorry. Okay, that is a good question. And that might be a little outside of my realm of particular expertise, but I'm, you know, learning new things every day. How does government have a role in providing that? I guess Section 8 would probably be the the service that my mind first goes to. We also have like the TIF areas and economic development areas that I know have been on the docket lately. But those would kind of be the, you know, the two things I would think of first.
And Ms. Wilson, same follow-up to you. How do you believe local government can partner with lenders and land developers and builders to attract investment in housing in Nashville?
Well, I know that there's some properties in town where there might not be able to, you know, be really built right now just because of a wetland issue and so on, but maybe we can work with lenders to work on some of those properties to become more attractive to people, maybe not be so open to always have as many rentals. A lot of people want to live here, but a lot of people really would like to own their own home, too. And while rentals can be attractive to people, I think that the government could work with the lenders to find new ways to market the housing and help with maybe even some different types of rate lowering to incentivize people to come and move into this area.
All right, next question goes back to you, Ms. Wilson. What actions can town council take, if any, to address environmental issues such as land use, air quality, waste, water, energy, and other others?
Well, with the, you know, the waste in the water, obviously, we've addressed that already with with the current concern that we have. As far as land use, I, I know that the town is landlocked so far as to what we can do. And I'm not 100% sure of all of the air issues that we have in town. I'd like to learn more about it and see if there's things that we can do to to maybe improve any of those issues that arise. But I think that I personally think that a lot of the air quality here is is actually pretty good because we are surrounded so much by, you know, so many trees, which really helps with oxygen, of course. And as far as I really just go back to the the water issue and the sewer issue to be something that I think that we need to address the most. And maybe work on grants, hire some people who are more knowledgeable on the situation to help us find those grants and then find ways where eventually we no longer have to ask for government assistance. It's something that our town has already set forth and has planned for ahead of time to to be prepared for things like this, should this ever happen again.
Okay, Ms. Hofstadter, same question. What actions can town council take, if any, to address environmental issues?
Thank you. I was actually just pulling up some notes from a Zoom meeting I had earlier today. So this is an issue that's really close to my heart. And I'm also very relevant for this period of time. We're going to have a town hall meeting next week on the 6th. And the, we have two representatives from the Environmental Resiliency Institute out of IU coming to give a presentation and facilitate a roundtable discussion. There's so many opportunities out there for us to collaborate with other communities and and apply for grants because right now, we're really starting to feel the effects of climate change around the world. And and, you know, the government is kind of like, oh, shoot, now what do we do? Here's some money and fix it. And so we have these opportunities, and the Environmental Resiliency Institute can help us navigate a lot of those opportunities as well as help us determine the specific the specific issues that we need to prioritize. So are we going to be experiencing more flooding, more drought, more forest fires? Well, probably not the forest fires. And so they they have all this data, and I really encourage everyone to come to this roundtable discussion. There'll be a virtual option as well as in-person at Town Hall on the 6th at 6:30. And if you are unable to make it, because I know that the league also has a candidate forum at this, at a similar time, you can, you can submit questions that you might want to have answered and email them to me. But yeah, so basically, what we're, I may have like trailed off a little bit and kind of come back, coming back to the question. What we need to focus on is how to keep our people safe in the face of environmental change. So local resilience to environmental change is that reinforcing bridges, having an emergency preparedness, protecting forestry, air quality and water quality, like we've seen what happened in Jackson, Mississippi with the water there. And all of the, like, there are so many things that can be catastrophic to communities if we don't take care of them and mitigate these these impending, this impending doom, if you will.
Thank you. All right. Okay, Ms. Hofstadter, next question starts with you. Do you support the concept of an historic preservation ordinance for the town of Nashville? Why or why not?
Yes, I've given some thought to this one, and I believe that we should have a historic preservation ordinance because there's a lot of history in this town, and it's important to preserve history. And it's seems to be something that is really important to a lot of the residents in Nashville. And at the end of the day, I work for the people that live here. I work for the residents, and if it's something that's important to them, it's important to me.
Ms. Wilson, same question. Do you support the concept of an historic preservation ordinance for the town, and why not?
Yeah, I think a historic preservation for this town would be a great idea. Like Anna mentioned, there are a lot of buildings here, a lot of locations that have significant historic value. And in doing that, along with having a historic preservation ordinance, I think it's important that we also not only recognize those locations as a historic location, but also figure out ways to to keep them going, to keep them up, to make sure that they're safe and well-maintained for people to come in and enjoy, to use as a store, for instance, or to just go and visit and look at and learn a lot about the history of Brown County and the surrounding area.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson, next question to you. What are your views on creating TIF districts?
I think TIFs are really good. I think you have to be careful with how they're used, but I think that it's important that when a company wanted to, wants to come in, for instance, and do something to not only help build upon themselves and their business, but help, you know, the community, that that is something that could really be a positive impact upon this community. We have a lot of really great locations here in town that I think, you know, help bring in good revenue. And I think it would really be good to have additional stores or or other types of locations in town to help build upon additional revenue for the residents and for that location itself.
Ms. Hofstadter, what are your views on creating TIF districts?
Yes, so I agree with Ms. Wilson. I think that TIF districts can absolutely be wonderful. They can be wonderful. That doesn't mean that they always are, but they can be as long as the procedure is followed properly, and and it's it is actually beneficial to the town. And yeah, I guess that's not what I'm going to say. Yeah, as long as it's like the procedure is followed and it ends up benefiting the town, then beyond a reasonable doubt, and there's data to back up the hypothesis of the benefit, then I think that, yeah, they can definitely be really great. But I think that we need to be very careful about how we establish them.
Okay, Ms. Hofstadter, next question for you. What focus should town council have on programs for our youth, if any?
I'm sorry, could you repeat it real quick?
What focus should town council have on programs for youth, if any?
Okay, awesome. So yeah, I love the idea of the youth getting involved with local government. When I first got into office in 2019, I started with Councilmember Gretti. We started a youth council in the high school, and that was so much fun. That was kind of pre-COVID, and it tapered off a little bit during the COVID, and now these kids have graduated, but we had so much fun. And the kids like came up with their own mission statement, and we like, basically, were there as advisors to help help them learn how to participate in a formal meeting setting, and they got to sit in the big chairs at Town Hall and and learn about how local government works and find issues that were important to them. So I, and honestly, like, I think that I don't know if I would be where I am today or if I would be as interested in politics as I am today if I hadn't been exposed at a young age to civic involvement in my local government. That was a really important, like, developmental step for me as like an adolescent and teenager. So yeah, I think that it's really important to get kids involved. I'm excited about, I've been on the the school's ambassador program, right? Madison, you're on that, too. And so I'm really interested in working with the school and seeing how we can collaborate and and get kids to learn about government. I also went to the Helmsburg Elementary, and I talked to some of the students, or like last year, about when they were like learning about government, you know, I gave a little presentation about local government, and that was really fun. I just want kids to understand that it's not that far-fetched for them to get involved in their community and make a difference.
Ms. Wilson, what focus should town council have on programs for youth, if any?
I think that it would be good for the town council to have a focus on programs for youth. I think there's a lot of programs in town, things like the different camps, the Y, the council, like Anna mentioned, do something. There's different things that they have for youth, and but I, I think it's important that there's some more. The fire department, for instance, has restarted their cadet program, and that could get kids excited about becoming firefighters or getting into just emergency preparedness somehow. There'd be a great for maybe a youth program to help kids for other programs. Eagle Manufacturing is an excellent example of helping to teach kids not only how to use their hands in different ways to to work with these tools, but to maybe get excited for something for the future. And I think that it's important that the council gets involved to not, maybe not necessarily be totally into it, but but support it, to help support the youth, because I don't think that there's enough yet in town to help support the youth. And I'd really love to see more to to just get them excited about things for the future, help build on things that they're struggling with, and just motivate them to to maybe build upon a skill that they have an interest in.
Thank you. We'll take a brief moment here to remind those participating in the audience that they can submit questions for the candidates tonight via the chat room. Our next question starts with Ms. Wilson. If Nashville received a $1 million grant to use for the town in any way that you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Well, you know, there could be a really easy answer to that and just say, oh, use it for this. This is something that we've been wanting to do. But I think that it's really important that the council would sit back and kind of take breather and take a step and look at, you know, what are our absolute needs? And I, I think it'd be a really good time to listen to the town, too, to kind of see what their concerns are. Maybe there are some things going on in town that the council isn't fully aware of or hasn't understood is as important to the town as as they, you know, originally considered. There are definitely some needs for town. I would love to say that it would be easy to put it toward the the water problem that we have right now. Unfortunately, it's really not going to even make much of a dent in what we have to do. So then put it towards something that actually is going to make a dent in town and help improve it. What that could be, I have absolutely no idea, but I think that setting a plan forth with that $1 million and saying this is what we can do with it, whether we spend it or we save it for something later and invest it to create more money, or we split it up into different into different buckets. It's something that definitely would take some planning, and I think it should be more people than just the council to come for, to come together and come up with that plan.
Thank you, Ms. Hofstadter, same question. If Nashville received a $1 million grant to use for the town in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Well, I'm really like, really glad to hear Ms. Wilson's response. I could not agree more. And I'm really excited that, yeah, she feels that way. Of course, I have a wish list, a Christmas list, if you will. You know, I'd like to use it for this or that, but but we have, we have to prioritize, like, what are the needs? There's like Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We need like food, shelter, water, right? And and we need to make sure that our residents are, that we're providing the basic, the basic needs to the community, the basic responsibilities of government, like roads, water, and and whatnot for like police, fire. We need to make sure that we're providing those basic needs before we can get excited about a fun project that might be on our Christmas list. And we have, unfortunately, a million dollars wouldn't go super far, but it would make a dent. And I like, I like the idea that Ms. Wilson said about perhaps saving it and using it as collateral to apply for grants, and that's something that I think that the council needs to focus maybe a little bit more on, on having a little bit of a reserve fund so that we have match money for when we do apply for grants. It kind of, it's kind of like the old adage, it takes money to make money, right? So that's an idea. But yeah, I think that our our water infrastructure is very flawed. A million dollars wouldn't go super far. We have a lot of things that we could use it for, but we would have to get together as a council and evaluate what the absolute top priority, highest need, basic need is for the community to use that money.
All right, Ms. Hofstadter, the next question is for you. Is there a strategic plan for the town? What are its strengths and weaknesses?
So we had a strategic plan prior to my, prior to my term. In fact, I think Sarah Clifford mentioned it, and I haven't, so it's, it's pretty old. So we've had a strategic plan in place, but we haven't really followed it super well. So having a strategic plan isn't like news. It's not a new idea, but we definitely need to update it for sure. And I know that that's been a pretty big priority of the current council, but we don't have one like, like one specific strategic plan at the moment. Oh, yeah, it's been a priority. It's been a focal point.
Did you want to use your, the remaining time to discuss further the strengths and weaknesses of the existing plan?
Um, so there are, like, so the strategic plan would basically like prioritize different things that we need within the community, right? And I think that we need to focus on the old plan and bring it into, like, we don't need to reinvent the wheel as much as the old plan and bring it into like, we don't need to reinvent the wheel as much as as much as we're attempting to do at the moment. Because a strategic plan has already been made, we can kind of just work within that framework. And I I don't know if we need to spend a bunch of money to hire people to like make the strategic plan if we already have one, and we can maybe just edit the framework that we have.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, your turn. We've established there is a strategic plan in some condition for the town. What do you believe are its strengths and weaknesses?
Well, I don't know what the strengths and weaknesses are for the strategic plan because I'm not sure what it is. But I do think that we definitely need to have one. I think that we need to be more proactive in our planning for the town, which may be something that they're working on. And maybe and because it seems like we've been more reactionary. And having a five-year, a 10-year, and a 30-year plan, I think, is absolutely vital to keep this town going. We have to look at where we are now and where we want to be. You know, you you budget things out different out in your life. You budget out your money and your groceries and everything else, and you have a plan for it. So I think that it's something that the council absolutely has to have. I think it actually should be the top priority. So we know exactly what is going on with the council now and exactly where we want the council to be five, like I said, five, 10, 30 years from now, so we can come up with a savings plan for something maybe that we know will happen 30 years from now for something that could happen 10 years from now, or even in the event that something may happen. We have to be ready for that, and I think that's really important that we we have a solid plan for what we are going to do, what may happen, and what may not happen, just to help protect us for any future events.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to our last pre-planned question, and we'll start that with Ms. Wilson. What is your vision for Nashville's future? In 10 years' time, what would you like to see happening in Nashville?
Oh, I'd love to see more growth in the town. And when I say more growth, that doesn't necessarily mean you know, the town blows up and is expanded into something, you know, this huge metropolis or anything. The quaintness of the town, I think, is something that really draws people here. But I would like to see more people coming to live, actually live in the town. I would like to see the school start to grow again with more students, get some younger families in here. So we can start building that, you know, just building the the population of the younger people here in town. I would love to see more things like festivals happening throughout the year. I've I've seen different people show interest for different things like this happening, but it helps draw more people to our town. You know, October is the best time of the year for any shopkeeper, any restaurant, any hotel or anything here in town. And it would be absolutely fantastic to see more draw all throughout the year, and that would involve maybe, you know, like I said, more festivals, more things to bring people in. Something for people to do after the music show, for instance. If there was something for people to they could go eat, or they could go bowling or something, you know, if someone wanted to bring that in. That things that are going to draw more people here and bring more people who actually live here out and get get out to do things, you know, on the evenings and the weekends and just be more of a local community. It doesn't always feel like that. Sometimes it feels more just like the tourist community. Obviously, because we see so many, but I would like to see more local get out and really just get involved in a lot of the events that are going on in town. The parades and everything are really starting to draw the the locals, and I think more events like that, or even, like I said, something to do on the nights and weekends, just to help them would be a fantastic idea. And that's what I'd like to see in like five, 10 years, more growth of that.
Ms. Hofstadter, same question. What is your vision for Nashville's future? In 10 years' time, what would you like to see happening in Nashville?
I would also like to see more younger families and a stronger local economy. I envision a town that takes care of all of its residents while promoting sustainable growth. Youth programming and activities will have a residual effect throughout our future by reducing crime, drug use, teen pregnancy, et cetera. So investing in youth is investing in our future. So Nashville tends to be a tourism-based economy. And so we have to think, why do tourists visit Nashville? Well, it's because the art and the foliage. And I believe that we should encourage the eclectic landscape through policies that value small business owners and artists. I believe that by implementing some environmental policies will also preserve our economy. I would like to see more pedestrian infrastructure, and that's something I've been working on also with the county as well. And we're doing, we're making some good strides there. It is a public safety concern, which is one of the most fundamental fundamental responsibilities of any governmental body. So as your Town Councilwoman, second-term Town Councilwoman, I would like to work with local business owners, public safety officials, and residents so that the entire community sees long-term sustainable yields and provide a safe, healthy environment for Nashville's residents.
Okay, we are moving on to questions from the audience. And we will start with Ms. Hofstadter. The first question from the audience is, how would you address traffic control in residential neighborhoods? For example, drivers who use roads for a cut-through and speed-through neighborhoods such as Artist Drive and Coffee Hill Road?
So I I would like to see a little more enforcement from our local local public safety officials. But also some infrastructure improvement such as speed bumps, you know, caution lights and and whatnot. Is that, I think that's about yeah, maybe some roundabouts if if needed.
Ms. Wilson, same question for you. How would you address traffic control in residential neighborhoods?
Well, being on one of those roads, I see a lot of it, and I feel a lot of people cut through. It may not bother me as much as other people, but because it is a problem for some people, I think it definitely needs to be addressed. I really am not sure. I'd love to see people drive a little bit slower, for sure. There's a lot. There are a lot of children, a lot of people walking. Either just, you know, by themselves or with dogs or something, and so it's important that people are at least driving slower. How you would fix that? You know, you, we do have police officers driving up and down the road to monitor. They can't be there 24 hours a day, and I I really wouldn't expect them to be because they have a full-time job to take care of instead of just taking care of the roads. But, you know, Coffee Hill, for instance, definitely something that shouldn't be a cut-through. Not really sure why that one is a cut-through, to be honest, but I could I could see speed bumps, and at one time in my old neighborhood where we used to live, I addressed that issue with the town mayor, and it it turned out to actually be a bad idea. People tended to use, wanted to use them as a challenge more rather than something to actually slow down on. And I would hate to see anybody try to do that for their own safety or with to damage their car. But it, like Anna said, you know, maybe that is a tool to use to just let people know that they need to slow down a speed bump here or there. I think I'd like to speak with a couple of people about it to learn more about some of the best best ideas before I move forward with a solid answer.
Okay, in the chat, the topic of infrastructure is very prevalent. So this next question reads, expansion of sewer services could both expand potential housing options and improve water quality. How can the council work with other town and county entities to improve this aspect of infrastructure? Ms. Wilson, we'll start with you.
I think it'd be important to talk to other towns that are successful in this. You know, there's, I know that Noblesville has been real successful in, you know, in this kind of project. And just figure out what it is that they've done, what they've learned from, what maybe they've done wrong, like I said, and learned from, and how they've moved forward to become more successful. I think it's important to to really just sit down with with these different towns and the councils and, like I said, figure it out. What what have they done? What how improvements have they made? Where have they struggled and find where there is some common ground on both ends and learn from them to figure out what we can do better to help improve the sewer system and all those services. I just, I really think that talking to other people and learning is the best way to do it.
Ms. Hofstadter, same question on the topic of expanding sewer services. With the potential to expand housing options and improve water quality, how can the council work with other town and county entities to improve this aspect of infrastructure?
So I I agree with Ms. Wilson. I'm a big fan of of learning from other people's success. And, yeah. And there's a lot of examples out there, you know, nationwide, worldwide even, for us to be able to think outside the box and on ways in which we can improve our community and our infrastructure. But also, I would like to mention that some sometimes what other neighboring areas do with their own infrastructure impacts our infrastructure. Such as like runoff, and there's like the Lake Monroe watershed and erosion and whatnot. So I think it's important for us to realize that we all are neighbors and and what we do impacts one another so that we're not just pushing our problems down the down the stream. But we're so like upstream, like in when they're making a subdivision or whatnot in Bargeursville, like that affects how the water runs off into our into Brown County. Does that make sense? And so I think it's important to work with these other communities to anticipate and and prepare for how how we as as a whole handle handle the resources.
Okay, we'll give infrastructure a rest for a moment and move on to some other topics. The next question from the chat is, are you willing to take a look at merging law enforcement with the county?
Is that me?
And we will start with Ms. Hofstadter. My apologies.
Yeah, I'm absolutely willing to consider that. I I'm willing to, I just basically, as a person, I I'm willing to consider anything. I think it's always important to to question everything and look at all sorts of options. And that's how we arrive at the most ethical conclusions is by evaluating a variety of options. So, yeah, I'm absolutely interested in looking into it. I'd like to do the cost-benefit analysis, the pros-cons list, and find out you know, exactly how it's gonna, how it might impact you know, as financially safety-wise and everything, yes. But it's definitely something I think i- if we don't look into it, then we're not doing our job. But I I also really appreciate the the Nashville Police Department. I think they're doing an outstanding job. But I I think just in any, in any area, it's important to always try to grow and get better and think outside the box.
Ms. Wilson, same question. Are you willing to take a look at merging law enforcement with the county?
Yeah, I'm absolutely willing to look at it. I guess I would like to look at the pros and cons like Anna mentioned, but also look at why it hasn't been done yet. Why, what are the pros and cons in that? Why are we keeping one and keeping the other? And I think it's great to have both. I think it's wonderful to have something that takes care of the town and then also of silly takes care of the county. And I would be definitely willing to look at it and see, you know, where we could go from here to keep it or change it, but I don't have a definitive decision, you know, personally, on whether or not I even think that's a good idea or a bad idea.
All right, our next question is, how do you plan to make yourself available to citizens to dialogue outside of meetings? And we will start with Ms. Wilson.
Well, I'm usually pretty available. If somebody wanted to email me or meet with me, if they wanted to talk to me on the phone, I would be willing to do that. I wouldn't want to do anything that would compromise my position on the council. But I would be definitely willing to talk with people about any concerns they have. If they wanted to stop me on the street and talk to me about something, I would be happy to discuss it as far as we could go there and then move forward to discussing with the council if it's really something that is is big and necessary enough to to really take to them. And when I say that, that doesn't mean that any problem is going to be too small. If somebody has concern, I think it's a concern for the entire council. But I would, I mean, I'm, I work around town, and I'm I'm usually all over the place in town. So I'm readily available most of the time to talk to people if they want to.
Ms. Hofstadter, same question. How do you plan to make yourself available to citizens to dialogue outside of meetings?
I feel like I am pretty accessible. I, people do stop me on the street. They call me, text me, Facebook me, email, like I would, I would actually be curious, now that you mention it, I would be curious to maybe do like a little survey and find out how the people feel about council's accessibility. Do they feel like we are accessible? Because I feel like I I try to be very accessible. But I wonder how the, you know, the status, like the like the average resident feels about our accessibility. I know that we at Town Hall, we just, we either just got a new phone system or we're in the process of getting a new phone system. I would like for us to have for town, for council members to have like a voicemail that we can access, so people can call and be like, you know, any hour, even if it's the middle of the night, they can like, you know, press five and and get my voicemail or something and leave a message and and I can check it and get back to them. But I know that our our email addresses are on our website. And and people do utilize those. As well as the 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 generic like town email, those get sent to council members as well if somebody has a a question for Town Council in general. And then I I also would like to work with our town manager a little bit. I know she, I haven't, we haven't really talked about this yet, but eventually, I know that she has a lot on her plate right now, but eventually, working on our social media and being more accessible in today's world for for younger people.
Okay, our next audience question is, discuss pros and cons of working more cooperatively with the county. We'll start with you, Ms. Hofstadter.
So I don't see any cons to working with the county. A lot of our interests overlap. So so we started a bicycle pedestrian safety ad hoc committee, like a temporary committee, to establish a bicycle pedestrian safety master plan like a year, year and a half ago. And we collaborated with the county somewhat recently and and got a grant to 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 pursue this master plan because there's like a lot of overlap in our interests. And so there's no downside to collaborating with our neighbors. Better, it's better to work smarter, not harder, right?
Ms. Wilson, same question to you. Would you please discuss pros and cons of working more cooperatively with the county?
Oh, I think it's been pretty important that we work with the county. You know, everything, almost everything, I think, that happens in town is going to affect the county in one way or another. Obviously, there's going to be some differences, taxes and so on, but I, you know, like Anna said, at this time, I can't think of really any cons to working with the county because I think that it's important that that we work together and are not, you know, kind of fighting with one another when it comes to making decisions for the town or when they're making decisions for the county, you know, you want to do things that are going to benefit both because even though it's Nashville, it's all of Brown County. And so so you do want to work together with them. And like I said, you know, the the things that we do in town, a lot of the people in the county are affected by that. And so I I think it's important that we get together every once in a while to just discuss some things to see how we can continue to work together and and just make this a whole better community and county rather than just one one town.
Okay, I really like the idea of getting together every so often to, yeah, have a little roundtable, sorry.
No, sure. And let's jump back to infrastructure quickly. The next question from the audience is, what infrastructure needs would you prioritize in addition to water? And we will start with you, Ms. Wilson.
Oh, infrastructure needs to prioritize other than the water. I mean, the first one that probably comes is I would say the roads and the housing for sure with the infrastructure, but yeah, I would, I would say the roads first. It certainly seems to be a huge issue that people have in this area. I've seen a lot of concerns that that people have with how the roads are being I've, I've seen a lot of concerns that, that people have with how the roads are being improved. Whether it's just the road being paved or whether it's the shoulder on the side of the road when you're driving down, you know, one of, one of the backroads or one of the side streets. And you're just a little bit too close for comfort for the car coming in the opposite direction. So I think that, that roads would definitely play the, the second card when it comes to something that we absolutely need to address. You know, next to the water issue.
Ms. Hofstadter, same question. What infrastructure needs would you prioritize in addition to water?
Non-motorist infrastructure. Pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure is a public safety concern, but it's also an investment in our town's value. It beautifies the area. It, I mean, number one, it makes it safer, right? But it also makes our town more attractive to people that are considering maybe moving here or maybe not moving here. If there are bike lanes and safe sidewalks to get from, you know, A to B or trails, a variety, a network of non-motorist infrastructure is definitely like would be next to water, for sure. It's an investment.
Okay, we are approaching the one-hour mark, so we will take our last audience question before moving on to closing statements. And that question is, given your busy lives, how much time do you expect to be able to invest each week in your education, preparation for, and attendance of meetings? Ms. Hofstadter, we'll start with you.
Oh gosh, I have a problem with the work-life balance sometimes. I, so after the, the past four years, yeah, it's very easy to like get very consumed with, with town council. And I would love to be able to make ends meet doing what I love, but I also love teaching swim lessons and gotta feed my family. Yeah. So it's, it's about time management. I spend at least 15, 10, 15 hours a week, I'd say. But it kind of just varies. I mean, I'm involved in a lot of different commission, like, um, you know, committees, commissions. And I go to like lots of different meetings to enrich my education about what's going on. Like I just went to a, a climate leadership summit over in Rich, Richmond, yeah, like eastern Indiana. And next week I'm going to Bloomington to, anyway, so I, I like to go to a lot of these lectures and, and like webinars and whatnot to learn more about what I'm interested in. But it can get very consuming very quickly. So just a heads up, Ms. Wilson, you get, you can spend your whole life, um, you know, you gotta, say, sometimes you just gotta say no and say, so I actually have decided I'm not going to take emails on my phone. So I have to actually sit down at my computer when I do town council stuff. And that's been a kind of a nice boundary for me to set in my personal life. But yeah, I mean, I can easily spend 40, 50, 60 hours a week. You know, never, there's, you never know everything. There's always more to learn. But to get like the very basic bare minimum, to be prepared for the meetings, I feel like at least 10 hours a week is, 10, 15 hours a week is about what I do.
Ms. Wilson, same question. Given your busy life, how much time do you expect to be able to invest each week in your education, preparation for, and attendance of meetings?
Well, I guess I'll do what's necessary. If I am on the council, then I will not be able to serve on the four boards that I'm currently on. So that will free up time and then I'll just take that time that I use for those boards. Whether it's attending the meetings, studying the material that we receive at those meetings and use that for the council. I work from home most of the time during the week and that allows me an extra hour, which has been really nice to be able to focus more time too. I'll be able to balance my life the way I, I always have. I, I'm always busy and I always find different things to do. But I always make sure that I take time for what I'm involved in, for what my needs are for myself and my family. And just some things for enjoyment as well. And if I'm on the council, I plan to do exactly that, which is what I have been doing. Balancing my personal and business life with myself and my family for the past 19 years or so. And I'll continue to do that in whatever factor is necessary for the council.
All right, we are going to conclude tonight's rounds of questions with each of you by giving a one-minute closing statement. And Ms. Hofstadter, we are going to start our closing statements with you. Please proceed.
Oh, can you hear me? Okay. I'm here before you now as your town council candidate because of the support of my friends, family and neighbors. So go team. It is unfortunate that we don't have the opportunity tonight to meet and discuss all of your questions with all of the candidates. However, I am very grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight and to address your questions. Thank you all for listening and appreciating my words and ideas. I hope that you also feel that you were heard. So my resume aside, I believe that the only thing that truly qualifies me to serve you is that I want to. I have the passion, fresh perspectives and energy to make Nashville the best it can be. As a parent and as a citizen, my focus is on the future. As your councilwoman, I will continue working with others in the town, county and state to bring the brightest future for Brown County.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson, your one-minute closing statement.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for listening tonight and I hope this gave some insight to some questions that you had before you came to this meeting. And I also have a great amount of support from my friends, family and my neighbors and I'm, I'm so grateful for it. If I didn't want to do this, I wouldn't be here. And I mean, it's, it's as simple as that. I'm not here to try to gain friends or do anything. And I'm, I'm here because I see something that needs some change and improvement. I'd like to be a part of that. And I see something beautiful in this town and I want to be more of a part of that. And if I get the chance to do that for the next four years, then that's super awesome and I would really be grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you both so much. This concludes tonight's candidate forum. So on behalf of the Brown County League of Women Voters and our cosponsors, the Brown County Chamber of Commerce and Hoosier Action, we would love to invite you to watch our, the remaining candidate forums. Sorry, my computer is going a little bit squirrely. Watch the remaining candidate forums on our YouTube, our YouTube page. You'll be able to find those on our website as well. But more importantly, we want to encourage each of you in attendance tonight to commit to vote this election. Because your voice is your vote. So please be prepared and know the important deadlines. We have a slide up here that outlines those. The first deadline to make sure you're registered to vote by October 11th. That's always one month before every election. And we will send follow-up emails with voting information. We also have a voter guide in this week's edition of the Brown County Democrat, as we mentioned before. You can visit vote411.org and the League of Women Voters website, which is lvwbrowncounty.org. Once again, thank you to our candidates for allowing us to get to know their positions on important community issues. We appreciate everyone in attendance and we hope you have a great night.
Thank you.